Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. If you can make your way to a table or the seat, that would be great. After you get some pizza and chips and water. Really appreciate you being here today. When you plan something like this, you're not sure how many people are going to come. And you're not sure which direction to go to get the information out. And so we are just so excited to fill up this room. And I was over, I wanted more chairs than I thought because we're going to fill them up. So I've always tried to think positive. So but I'm so glad that you guys are here. And thank you so much on behalf of the whole coalition. And so my question first is stand if you are a part of the committee that put this together today. If you could please stand. So in the back, you can see Jason Holdren, Jason Hildren, Jason Gil, Jason Gil, and myself. So you can see Monica, and in the back, we've got Jesse. And so thank you so much. Now stay standing because if you are a part of the Hope Coalition, please stand. Thank you very much. You can see it. Okay, so next, I have a question. Who here knows, and not any of the Coalition members, knows what HOPE stands for? What do you think HOPE stands for? You can guess. It's okay. We'll let you guess. Yes, Ms. Christie?
Healing, Outreach, Prevention, and Education.
Did you cheat? I guess. That table. No cookies for you. So yes, it means Killing, Outreach, Prevention, and Education. And so that is why we are here today. And we are super excited to present this platform today so that you can hear about things that we all wonder about and we want to know. And what can we do to fix it? So with that, I am just super excited to have Jason Holdren and our prosecutor, our county prosecutor, and our sheriff, Matt Champlin, along with our Ohio State Patrolman, Matt Atwood. And I will let Jason talk about who Matt Atwood is and what he has to present to us. Thank you.
So we, we, we met, a group of us met, and there was some conversation about what this night would look like. And a lot of people had some different ideas. And I have a big mouth. And they're laughing here at the front table. And I said, one of the things in my seven years of being in this job that I have been intrigued by is what goes on around us that we don't know about. Whether it's at Walmart, whether it's on your school campuses, whether it's on our highways. It's pretty amazing. And we quickly formed a friendship, a relationship with the Ohio State Patrol Criminal Patrol Unit. Their only job is to do drug interdiction. Their only job is to sit on highways and take large sums of drugs off of the highway. And every time that we would have Matt Atwood and his colleagues come in and testify, the jurors at jury trials and during grand jury, they would always give us feedback of how interesting this was, and we had no idea about it. And so the thought that I had is before we can really combat an issue, we need to understand what the enemy looks like, and we need to understand how it gets here. And so the committee said, I think that's a good idea. And you can bring Matt in and we'll talk about it. So that's what we're doing tonight. But I do see several people here. We've got our superintendents from our city schools, our county schools. This, we've got our Director of Job and Family Services, and we even have Santa Claus back here. So this is an important thing for everyone. And it impacts and it touches everyone, especially some of those that I've mentioned. And, you know, you know, our superintendent could talk about, it's not just their job to educate kids. They have so many other jobs that they are required to take care of with kids. And so the same would go for Job and Family Services. The numbers of our cases with children's services, the number of responsibilities that we all have because of this epidemic that we are in. So with that... Is your mic on? By the way, the sheriff is also here. I just want everybody to know this. I've mentioned it a couple of times today. It is his birthday. Tom, go ahead. Would you lead us?
Oh, no. Yeah. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Matt. Happy birthday to you.
I just want two lunches and a steak dinner. If you would, so here's how we're going to do this. Just like if we were in a jury trial and Matt Atwood was testifying about a case that he has, we spend quite a bit of time about the background and what his job is all about. So we're going to go through that. The sheriff is also here because although Matt does a good job, he doesn't get all the drugs. And so they do, as we know, make it into our community. And so the sheriff is going to talk about what that looks like as well. We've got, you know, we've got some of our, a couple of our commissioners here. They know what it looks like on the county budget, right? So but so we're going to go ahead and get started. So Matt, if you wouldn't care, tell the crowd a little bit about yourself and your background.
So I am, like you said, I'm assigned to the Jackson District Criminal Patrol Unit. That's based out of our Jackson District headquarters. We cover 10 different counties. Ross County, Pike, Scioto, Lawrence, Gallea, Jackson, Vinton, Meigs, Athens, and Hocken County. So with having 10 counties, we do spread out because we have a lot of responsibilities. We try to make it down here to Gallea County as much as we can. That's mostly because of the strong working relationship we have with the sheriff and his office and the other law enforcement agencies here in the county, as well as the prosecutor's office and the court system. And that collaborative effort is super impactful with the community and the benefits and the overall safety that we can provide. So with that being in Gallea County, we spend a lot of time here. I've been a trooper for nine years. I've been assigned to the Gallup List post at one point. That's where I started out. I spent three years down here. And then a position came open for a canine handler on the Criminal Patrol Unit in Jackson. So once I applied for that, I went through a 10-week dog school, and I've been there for about six years.
So you are a canine handler now?
Yes.
And he didn't bring the canine with him? That's what everybody's here to see, I think. So what's the difference between what you do and what a normal trooper might do on the highway?
So I'm, our Criminal Patrol Unit, we're designed to sit on our major highways that come through our southeast Ohio. US 35 is one of the primary ones. We spend all of our time looking for criminal, the criminal element. We don't write speeding tickets. So as you mentioned earlier, if I pulled you over, hopefully I didn't give you a ticket. I don't, I don't do that very often. So I don't handle, I don't handle calls unless I'm the closest one or my response is necessary. So I don't handle crashes or crash scenes or write tickets. It's all based on the criminal element and trying to make arrests. The primary motive is drug interdiction because that's the most impactful thing we can do.
So when you say drug interdiction, what types of drugs are you seeing as we sit here in 2023 versus what did you see six, seven, eight years ago?
Six, seven, eight years ago, it was pills, oxycodone, opanas. And then it was kind of the transition into heroin when heroin first, you know, not first, but when it really began to soar. And that's what we were having a lot of our overdoses from was heroin at the time. And then it quickly changed from heroin to fentanyl. And fentanyl has kind of been the leader for quite a few years now. But what we're starting to see now is fentanyl is in everything. It's in the cocaine, it's in, it's in the heroin. We hardly ever see just actually heroin anymore. It's very rare. We'll see the fentanyl in crack. We find it in pills. There's counterfeit pills. It's pretty rare we even find a legitimate oxycodone pill anymore. Almost every one is a fake pill that's been pressed. We see some cocaine, but the primary right now is meth and methamphetamine and fentanyl. And there's so many now, there's these nuanced drugs that are equivalent to fentanyl. They have different names and I couldn't even, there's probably a hundred of them, but it's all similar to fentanyl. That's what we're seeing.
Can you describe for those that may not know what methamphetamine is, typically what, what, what it does to the user, as well as maybe what fentanyl or heroin do?
Sure. Methamphetamines are stimulants. So that's the one that when they use it, it's not to, not to get high and pass out. It's to get high and, you know, they usually, they're the ones you usually see doing crazy things on sidewalks or in alleys, the videos you see online. It's usually caused by methamphetamine. It's what we call an upper. So it elevates them versus fentanyl, which is a downer or a, like it's an opiate or it's a synthetic opiate. So it's the model heroin, which is the complete opposite of methamphetamine.
And how many felony drug cases do you believe that you've worked approximately?
That's, that's a good question. I don't know, hundreds. I've probably been the primary officer on 300 or 400, but I've been involved in, I've been involved in probably a couple thousand.
And, and so the topic of the night is how drugs get here to Gallea County and impact our families, impact maybe those that are here. So I would like you to explain that as far as source cities, destination cities, and that type of thing.
So the, the logistics of drugs, like I just talked about, right now it's primarily methamphetamine and fentanyl. Those source from Mexico primarily. Now they get, they get supplied with the chemicals and the things to make fentanyl and methamphetamine from other countries like China or the Middle East. But then it goes to Mexico, and that's usually the pipeline to get it in the United States. So it works logistically, just like you would think of like a power grid or I assume like a gas supply system. It's based on flow. So it'll start in Mexico and then it branches up like a power grid would to substations. The substations are the major cities throughout the country. Our major cities for our area would be Columbus, Dayton, Detroit, Michigan, Chicago, Illinois. Those are our primary, I would say the top three are Columbus, Dayton, and Detroit. So once the drugs get from Mexico, work their way across the country to those cities, which we call our source cities, they then use the interstate system or the U.S. route system to break out into smaller areas like Gallea County, Huntington, West Virginia, Charleston, West Virginia, any little small town you can think of that primarily comes from those cities. So when it starts in Mexico, it starts with the, the Mexican drug trafficking organizations or cartels primarily used. They will get them from Mexico into the larger cities. Once they get to larger cities, it breaks down into street gangs. The street gangs are the ones who break out of the city and supply either, like say we had a drug dealer here in Gallea County, they would go to Columbus, get it from a street gang and create it back. Or the street gang in Columbus or Dayton, Detroit will bring it down themselves, set up shop here, and they're, they're coming from local drug dealers.
In the economics of the business, right? If you were to buy large amounts in, let's say, Detroit, do you know approximately what the price is there and then what it might be sold for? And Sheriff, you might want to chime in on this as well. What it's sold for locally?
Sure. The, I'm trying to think, the most recent one we, we had talked to us, a lot of times we intercept these drug traffickers and they don't, they don't tell us a lot of information. So when we do get ones that are willing to talk, we try and get everything out of them possible, just for our own knowledge. There was a female we stopped a long ago. This was on US 23. She had went to Dayton to get four pounds of meth. And she, and four pounds of meth is a lot of meth. That supplies a lot of people. That meth she got for, she was paying about $1,700 a pound for the meth. And then when she would get it back, she was going to Grayson, Kentucky. When she would get it to Grayson, Kentucky, she would break it down into ounces and she would profit over $5,000 per pound. And she, she admitted to us that she was doing this about every three to four days. So with four pounds, $5,000 a pound, she's profiting 20 grand every few days. That's part of the problem with the drug epidemic and why it's so hard to get rid of is because there's so much, so much money in it. At the, at the user end level, just a tenth of a gram, which is, you know, about the size of a pea, would be probably, if it's fentanyl, it'd be about $200. And methamphetamine, somewhere between 100 and 200.
And so locally, we, in our most recent covert operation that we've had, which is our undercover buys, we were buying fentanyl. Now, when I say fentanyl, and based on the illustration that Matt has given you, everybody that passes hands through usually affects that drug somehow. And when I say affect that, they cut it down. So it's, it's a business model. So, you know, you make money based on how much product you have and how much money, how much product you can put out. So if somebody down here gets an ounce of fentanyl, there's 16 ounces in a pound, 28 grams in an ounce. So they will take that and they will cut that. Usually it's with some type of powder, like an hostile powder, some type like a vegetable powder, baking powder. The last guy we got was cutting it with sugar. But they will basically dilute that drug out, but then they'll sell it, dilute it out because the more they dilute it out, the more volume they have, the more money they can make. So we were buying a very scaled down version of a fentanyl heroin mix, and we were buying it for $100 a gram. So you can see as it comes up from Mexico, breaks out in the source cities, comes down to the smaller communities. Everybody is affecting that in some way, breaking that down, watering it down, so to speak, because our person was buying from a drug dealer in Columbus who was buying from a cartel source. So everybody's got to make their own money off it. And it's a, it's a profit and loss business. They, they want to have more product, make more money.
And that's a good point you brought up, the dilution of the fentanyl. And that's, the problem is, is that's based on greed. It's trying to take their, whatever profit they had and maximize it to the most they can potentially get. What that turns into is somebody that uses, you know, however, let's say a half a gram of fentanyl in a day, based over the period of a day. If they buy off of somebody and for some reason that drug dealer runs out, or there's another person that rolls in, they buy it from a different person who's cut it down a different amount or a different way, and they have no idea because there's no, there's no regulations on this and there's no breakdown of ingredients or percentage. So people don't know what they're getting. And so what a half a gram of fentanyl from one drug dealer would do is a fraction of what the other person does. So when they try someone else's fentanyl, it ends up being 10 times more potent. That's how we get a lot of our overdoses, is this diluted mixture based on greed. And so you don't know what you're getting.
I see several people in here that have been on my grand juries. And without talking about anything specific, because we can't do that, one of the things that we always ask the officer when he pulls someone over and they find a small amount of drugs in someone's pocket and they want to talk, they'll say, yeah, I just bought this. It was, it was cocaine. And I always ask the officer, they said they bought cocaine. Were they correct? Almost like a game show, you know? And every time, it's not. It's cocaine with fentanyl and it's something else. And there's no return policy, right? There's no, no way to, you know, way, no way to get your money back. Doc Whiteley is not here, but Doc Whiteley is a very interesting man. He's been our coroner for a number of years. Judge, I don't know how long, but a long time. I meet with him once a year to discuss every overdose case in the county and every suicide in the county. Because I want to know, and our Hope Coalition wants to know, is there something that we can learn from these lives? Is there something that we can learn that, that, that maybe one group is more at risk than another? And he said, there's absolutely a group that's at risk more than another. I said, okay, what is it? He said, it's the folks that have been sober for any amount of time. Six months, 12 months, two years, four years. If, he said, if they, if they were accustomed to a tenth of a gram of heroin, and now they're going to buy a tenth of a gram of heroin and it's all fentanyl, they can't handle that. And he said, that is the group that's most at risk. And that is a group that I think that we all know someone, we all, in every capacity that we have, that is, that is such a vulnerable group. And so I would ask the question to the sheriff, we hear of situations of a bad batch. Certain counties might have a bad batch. We've, I think, had some of those in years past. What exactly would that be?
So echoing back to what Matt said, you know, we call it a bad batch or a hot batch. You know, again, when we get the narcotics coming in from the source cities, you know, we may have one dealer who normally sources from one place in Columbus, and today that place is out, but hey, my buddy over on the next street over, he's, he's good. So let me take you over there. And they bring back a different batch, a different mixture, a higher potency, whatever that is. And that's a lot of times where we see a spike is, a lot of times it is, it's individuals who have been sober for a long time and their tolerance is not what their tolerance used to be. And just like you illustrated, they think, well, this is what I used to do, so this is what I need to do. And that ends up in an overdose. Or a lot of times it is coming from a different source location, and it's a more stronger, more potent mixture than what their normal drug dealer usually provides them, or it's the same drug dealer, but he sourced from another location. And that potency is stronger than what they're used to, what their bodies used to. And that usually results in a spike in overdoses. And usually we see it in regions within our, within our county. Because usually, just like shopping, you know, everybody from Gallup List goes to Walmart. People from Rio Grande go to Kroger's in Jackson. You've got your local drug dealer, and that's kind of everybody's go-to. So when that drug dealer gets a bad batch or a hot batch, and everybody is sourcing for him, that's why we start seeing a spike in overdoses in a certain region of our county.
So let me go back to the trooper, Trooper Atwood. So when you're on 35 and you're, you're, you're looking, what exactly, I guess, are you looking for? And if you don't care, if you could maybe illustrate what a traffic stop might look like and the things that you might be looking for as you perform your job?
So what we're looking for, we sit, we sit stationary, we sit still in a, in the median crossovers. Like we like to sit on US 35 just west of the Rio Grande exit on 325. We usually sit there in pairs. We try to work as a team. We face primarily the eastbound traffic, which is the traffic coming into Gallea County because we're looking for the drugs coming in. If we were to flip the other way, we would be interdicting the drug proceeds going back to the source cities. When we sit there, we're, we're primarily looking for human behavior and human reactions. So we are considered like a stimulus to people. When they, even me as an old citizen, when I'm off work and I'm driving down the highway and I come over to home, and my first reaction when I see a state trooper sitting in the middle is I get a little nervous because I don't know what my speed is and I look down. So that, so everybody...
So do you slam on the brakes real hard?
I absolutely do.
So we're, so we're not weird?
No. So, so everybody experiences that at some point. So we are, we're trying to be a stimulus for people to see us, and we want to see a reaction. Because there's a difference between you might be doing five, 10, maybe 15 over the speed limit versus you're trafficking drugs into a county and you have enough to send you to prison for 10 plus years. So there's a difference in reaction to us as the stimulus. When they see us, they, they overdo the slamming on the brakes. We see the same traffic every day. We see people slow down. We see these like small behaviors that people do subconsciously when they drive in front of us because they were a little bit nervous. Well, we see the same thing from drug traffickers, but it's more extreme. And there's drops in speeds, the way people sit in their, in their car, the way they hold on to the steering wheel, the way their face looks, if they're looking at us, they're looking away. There's, I couldn't even tell you how many different things we look at. And it's not something I could just write on a piece of paper and you could go out and do. It's taken the years to figure it out. I'm still not right every time. It's still a process. But we're looking for that human behavior and the reaction to our presence. And we're looking for somebody that's the most scary of us.
And then some sort of a traffic violation occurs and then you initiate a stop?
Right, yeah. Once we see somebody that, you know, catches our interest, it doesn't, I mean, we can see A, B, C, D, E, F when they go in front of us or pass us, and that doesn't mean they're a criminal. It just, it grabs our attention. So then we'll go out, we'll follow, we'll get in behind them, follow them, pull up the side of them, and we'll even look in the car. It's a little awkward, but I'll look over at them and just see if their reaction is still the same or see if whatever I'd seen earlier was just a fluke. But if their reaction continues and they still are showing that, that response of, like a, it's like a heightened fear to us, then if there's a traffic violation, which there's a series of, it's not, you know, criminals aren't going to go 20 miles and over, 20 miles per hour over the speed limit. It's usually smaller violations, but they, they still commit a bunch of them. A lot of times they're so worried about us and they're looking in their mirror that they're all over the road. So once I get a traffic violation, I'll, I'll stop them for that and I'll walk up and I'll just speak to them about the violation, talk to them about their trip. And then usually it's based on that, I can determine if they're doing something criminal or if they're just on their way home from work and for whatever reason.
So let's, let's just make up a couple of people's names here. For instance, you know, Mary Deo and Fred Deo. Two completely fictitious people. Let's say you pull them over. Sorry, Mary. So when you're having these conversations, and give us some real life examples. You've never pulled over Mary Deo, right?
I have not. I don't know, I've stopped thousands of times. I don't, I don't think so.
But give us, give us some real life examples of these conversations that you have outside the hearing of one another that might be reflex.
So when I, when I first walk up to a car, I'm just, again, analyzing behavior, how they are reacting to me. And there's a difference between, everybody's nervous. I, like I just said, I'm nervous if I get pulled over. I told you I was nervous when I see somebody in the median. I get nervous if I get stopped also, and I have been. So there's normal nervous behavior and there's behavior that's over the top. People that are breathing like they just did sprints up a hill, that's not exactly normal. And that's something we notice. We can see heart rates in these people that are doing some type of criminal act, usually drug trafficking. You can see their heart rates in their, in their stomach. Their stomachs are fluttering. You can see their carotid artery just pulsing. You'll see their forehead starting to sweat. They won't, they avoid eye contact if possible. There's a whole list of things that I can just analyze on the behavior of them when I first walk up that usually within a few, a few seconds, I'm pretty confident if there's something, a felony, felony level offense in the car or not. So at that point, if there's multiple people, I usually try and separate them. I'll ask the driver to step out and walk back to my car. And I'll just speak to them about their trip, just casual conversation while I check their license and insurance and registration. And I'm looking for deception. I'm looking for somebody that's lying to me. When they, I'm asking where they're coming from, where they're going. If they're coming from Detroit, Michigan, and they're going to Gallup List. And when I ask why and they say they're going to look at a car, this is a real life example I've had time after time. They'll, they'll be traveling, you know, four or five hours to go look at a car. So I say, oh, okay, nice, what kind of car is it? I don't, I don't remember. I'm not really sure. How much is it? I don't remember how much it was. Okay, well, did you bring any money with you to buy the car? No, I'm just going to look at it and then I'm going to go back home. That's not normal. That's like, I feel like that's a little bit of a lie. So then, just go a little further, and this is a real life example. Okay, do you, how do you find the, the car? Facebook Marketplace. Do you have the listing? Can you just pull it up? I'm just curious about the car. Oh, you know, scroll through their phone for three minutes and they can't find it because they're lying to me. That's just a cover story because they can't tell me the truth, which the truth is, they're bringing, they're tracking narcotics into, into Gallup List. So breaking down the story and looking for lies.
So then after that, you might bring out a passenger.
Then I will go up to the passenger after I talk to the driver. Because maybe for some reason, this is, you know, this insane story about going to buy a car, that they don't know what it is, how much it is, where it is. Maybe for some reason it's truthful, but there's a passenger, so I go and I talk to the passenger. Now, these two people would have been coming from Detroit, Michigan. They're all the way in southern Ohio. You would think within four or five hours, they've talked to each other about what they're doing or they have a common understanding. So when I talk to a passenger and... So when I talk to a passenger and, one example is, I'll say, "Hey, where are you guys headed to?" "I'm, I don't, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just riding." "Okay, where are you riding to? How far are you going? Are you going to Florida?" "I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure." "Okay, what are you riding for?" "I don't know, I just jumped in the car, we're just, we're just riding." That's not normal. I mean, if you're four hours down the road in a car with somebody, you know where you're going or what you're doing. Another example would be a complete opposite story. They will have a story, but it's completely different. So the driver would have said they're going to Gallup List to look at a car, the passenger would say, "We're going to Miami Beach in Florida and we're going to spend a week there and we're going to a concert and then we'll be coming home." When the driver would tell me that they're going to Gallup List for an hour to look at a car and then they're going back to Detroit. So that's a very common and it's, it's oddly simple. Once I get them stopped, if I can get the right car, it's usually pretty simple to find out if there's some criminal activity.
And then at that point, you know, you're running their criminal history to see if there's any warrants, that type of thing, is that correct?
Yeah, all that, all, we have the ability to check their criminal history to see if they've been involved in any, any crime, specifically drug trafficking or money laundering or weapons trafficking offenses. And then I'll, I'll just ask them if there's anything in the car, if there's, if they're for consent to search the car. Then I have a dog, so I do have narcotics, K-9 strain in the detection of marijuana, heroin, cocaine, methamphetamine and crack. So I'll usually use him, walk him around the car to tell me if there is anything in there and then that becomes, if he indicates to the car, that becomes what we call probable cause to search the car and it gives us the right to search the car.
And the inquiring minds would like to know, where, when you are searching a vehicle, where are some of the oddest places that you've located?
I'm trying to think of the best way to say this. Unfortunately, the most common place we find drugs now, if there's a female in the car, she has it shoved in her vagina. They will, they will shove up to 200 grams, which is a very large amount of, we've had 200 grams of fentanyl in this, I believe it was this county. Males will shove it in their boats, that's, it's typically on, on their body. And the reason is because it's not easy to find that, right? I mean, if a female has it shoved inside her, that's not something we can see or just know. We've developed a pretty effective process on just talking to people, talking to these women, a lot of them are in bad situations, a lot are kind of forced into it. And we've found a way to just talk to them on a, on a human, human level and they, they come off of it. They'll tell us that they have it and they'll remove it and-
And oftentimes they don't even know what it is.
No.
What the substance would be.
Right, they'll, they'll just know it's a bag of some kind of powder.
You've also found drugs in hidden compartments, magnetic boxes?
Yeah, about everything you can imagine. They use, if, if it's not on somebody's body, it's all over the car. Behind radios, you'd have to remove a radio and it's back in the dash, behind glove boxes, indoor panels, and like you said, magnetic boxes. What magnetic boxes are, if you know what a Pelican case is, it's like a container, it's like a sealed weatherproof container, they'll attach magnets to that box and they'll fill it with drugs and then they'll usually put it on the undercarriage of a car, attached to like a frame rail. We found them on firewalls in the engine bay. That's, that's another method. We'll find it in groceries, in food, a lot of food, bags of chips. They're pretty elaborate too, like they, they do a really good job of, one in this county we got was a bag of potato chips. They had bought, I think it was like six bags of chips in Michigan and they had opened one of the bags, put a bunch of heroin in it at the time, put a bunch of heroin in it and then they had resealed the chip bag, but the way they did it, it looked real because it still had that, you know, that air that bed smays or no chips, filled with air. And they did that, resealed it perfectly, you couldn't even tell by looking at it. But luckily, we'd been trained on it before that they will hide them anywhere. So when we felt the chips, we could feel there was blocks inside, which was the heroin.
So oftentimes you'll have multiple people in a car and when you're searching a vehicle, oftentimes those individuals will go into the back of your cruiser?
Yes.
And your cruiser's equipped with audio and video devices?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and I always find this interesting, but in a situation where you have a female that tells you, "I do have drugs, I don't know what I have, I will get it out for you", that has occurred?
Yes.
And then she will be placed in the back of a cruiser with maybe another individual?
Right. So like we had mentioned, the, the female doesn't usually know even what she has. So that tells me, you can tell by talking to her, she's clueless about drug trafficking, she's just in whatever the situation is or where she's been put in a situation where she shoved something inside of her. So when I talk to her and I can tell that she doesn't really know anything about drug trafficking or even drugs in general, I know she's not responsible for it, she's just the courier. So if there's somebody else in the car and I have any kind of conversation with them and I can kind of tell that they're a little more knowledgeable, or they play like they're not, but I can tell they're not genuine and they're lying to me, then I will put them together in the backseat of our car because usually the female's pretty upset that she had a lot of drugs that were just pulled off of her and she's looking at prison time when her boyfriend, or a lot of times they don't even know each other very well, is responsible. So then we get them in the backseat and usually pretty good conversations they'll have in backseat.
And are they able to view you searching their car? And let's say it's a case where the drugs are actually in the car. Are they able to view you searching the car while they are in the backseat?
Right, they can. We have plexiglass dividers between like the front half of our car and the rear half. So when they're in the backseat, they can look through the plexiglass and see us searching while they're back there.
What are some of the best phrases that you've heard of people in the backseat when you've located their drugs?
Uh, I can't, I'm-
I mean, we are being reported to.
Yeah. We better avoid that topic. It's pretty, pretty extreme.
All right.
But it's like a game of hot and cold.
It is, absolutely.
As you're searching your car, then illustrating.
Yeah, that's, that's spot on. You'll, you-
Oh, it's getting close. Oh, oh.
Yeah.
I'm not mad.
Yeah, you see their attention heighten when you get to like a certain area of the car. And we've, we've, we've been lucky that it's safe this a lot of times because it's been in a, a very good hiding spot that we didn't, we couldn't find it on, I mean, you think of searching a car, there are way more hiding spots than you would think of in places that you can't even really figure out how to get to them. But when we search a car and you see they're paying attention and they don't really make any noise and then all of a sudden we get to a certain spot and they're pressing their face up against the glass and they're hitting each other on the leg and pointing and then they're looking at each other with a wide eyes and then they'll usually make some kind of a, a, a expletive comment. And then we've went back and after we've found nothing in the car, right before we were going to let them go, we've checked those videos while we're doing our final paperwork and we've seen that and that's led to us seizing drugs that would have otherwise made it through.
And, and for many officers, maybe the end of the equation would be you found drugs on or in a female. But we've had the conversation that that doesn't change the trajectory, it doesn't change the landscape here in Gallea County. If, if, if we're not pursuing the person that's putting them in that place and we're really not helping our community, is that-
That's, yeah, that's absolutely correct. We, I'm a strong believer in the big fish. I always want the next person up. I don't want to, you know, I could, I guess I could get my credit for finding the drugs and removing them from getting to the street, which is an element, but that's not where I want to stop. I don't want the person that's just got it at the time, even if it is the person in the car that's the, the drug dealer themselves, I don't want to just stop with them if I can get whoever supplies them in the city. I always want the next person up. It doesn't always work that way because some people don't want to talk to us, but we try.
So we have a few more minutes. I want to, I want to, if you'll pass the mic over to the sheriff. I want to talk about the, the drugs that are in our county and then, I guess, what tips you would have for the folks here as far as unusual activity in their neighborhoods and that, and that type of thing?
So it, it's a wide variety and it goes all the way from A to Z. And, you know, here's what I always tell people, you know your area of the county, you know what's normal, you know what normal behaviors for your neighbors are, for the neighbors 10 doors down, you know, what cars are in their driveway, what time they turn their lights on at night. We, what we always tell people is, hey, if you see something and it doesn't look right or it doesn't feel right to you, it's probably not right. You know, we, we've had people that'll, they'll call and say, "You know what, we live in this peaceful, quiet community and, and the end of every month, we, we see this car and it's got out-of-state plates and it comes in and then for the next four or five days after that, there's people walking to that house and they're walking through our backyard or they're, they're pulling up alongside of the street." So what I always tell people is, if it's outside of the norm for your environment, then there's probably something that is worthy of us looking into. You know, we always use the old adage, the Crime Watch adage, "If you see something, say something." A lot of times people will say, "Well, we don't want to call, we don't want to bother you, we know you're busy, we know you're, you're X, Y, Z, you got this wrong." We advertise our tip line a lot. The great thing about, the great thing about the way we've got our tip line set up now is, since we went to a VoIP system at the courthouse, our tip line is actually automated to email. So if somebody calls in right now and leaves a tip on our tip line, I automatically get an email. We use a mass text app through my office and so I can actually forward that voicemail that comes in out to all of my, my staff immediately. And that triggers them to, "Hey, there's, there's a house in Addison where there's increased traffic tonight." And the guys start moving that way and we start investigating and looking into it. So we have moved from the, "Hey, we've got a tape recorder down in the basement of the courthouse and we'll check it the next day." Because, you know, a lot of times what we see is people will set up shop at somebody's house or somebody will introduce a drug dealer from out of town to their friend and, "Hey, you can spend the night." And next thing you know, we've got an influx of traffic and by morning they're sold out and they're gone. So the ability to have that information real-time is hugely beneficial to us and it gives us a quicker response to go out and be able to work these crimes. So we just ask everybody that, "Hey, no matter what you're saying, call us. You're, you're never a bother." You know, that's what we're here for, that's what you pay us for. That's, that's what we enjoy to do. You know, we, we really enjoy going out and doing our job and stopping crime and interdicting crime. You know, the great thing about our working relationship with, with these guys, you know, and I actually worked the street with Matt before I took office and we share information and we've got great relationships. So it's nothing for him to have somebody stopped and call me or one of my detectives and say, "Hey, I got this and it's going to this house." And we end up doing search warrants and recovering more drugs because they're not completely sold out. So the nexus of people coming down here and forming relationships and setting up shop, it doesn't stop just coming down the highway. You know, a lot of times it'll come down the highway and it'll end up in Charleston or Huntington and then it filters back up. So the open relationships and the good communication that we've got with these guys all over the state pays dividends for us. But back to, just to close out your question, nothing is too big or nothing is too small. You know, we, we vet it out, we go out, we take a look at it, "Hey, if it's not," and they were having a birthday party that day, awesome, they were having a birthday party. But if somebody set up shop there and they're beginning to process drugs and sell drugs, it gives us a good, quick jumpstart rather than, they've been, there's been traffic like that for the last month and a half and they've established at that point in time we start having overdoses. So real-time information is huge.
Sheriff, it's been rumored that you actually have a Facebook page.
I don't know anything about Facebook.
It's also been rumored that you post videos from different locations around the county when there's road busts. So I guess, Mike, I guess if you would, you didn't think I'd go there. I guess if you would, if you would explain how tips turn into a bust like that. You, you mentioned when you get a tip, your guys might start in that area, start watching anything suspicious. If you take it from there, just give an example of how that is important, how you use that and how we've been successful with those tips.
Yeah, so if, if you can imagine, I get harassed a lot for our Facebook page and our videos and stuff, but we, we do that for a very important reason. When those pop up, people pay attention, they pay attention to what's going on. One of the things that I promised whenever I, I took office was communication and transparency. And I truly believe through communication and transparency with the people that we serve, we get information. It, it's a two-way street, there's not enough of us to be everywhere. So the community being our eyes and ears and giving that information back to us is imperative. The other thing that is very important is, we did a search on our Facebook page, I don't know if it's been three or four years ago, and we saw that there was a lot of people in Detroit, Michigan that was looking at our Facebook page. So we know that we're getting their attention and our perspective is to make ourselves a harder target. We want, we want those people up in Detroit, Michigan paying attention. I share all Jason's convictions and the people that were sentencing to prison from Detroit, Dayton, Columbus, because we want them paying attention to the fact that it's not tolerated here. And they think, "You know what, that's probably not a good place to go set up shop, we should probably try another county or another community." So there, there's a method to the matter.
Ms. Anita, we have 6:20 here.
Wow, we're really-
Yes, yes.
All right. So we're going to make a move here. And I just, I, I did forget to thank Bosser Library for having us. And it's, it's a wonderful facility here. And also the vendors on your way out this evening, we want to make sure that you at least talk to them, get their goodies and all this because they took time out to come and, and join you here. So with that, I would like for our panel to come up, please.
Let me, Judge Margaret Evans, she's our common police judge. Judge, come on up. I would say Matt Atwood's going to stay through the panel and he'll be here if you've got questions, like, "How fast can I really go over the speed limit for a second?" He'll be able to answer those questions for you later. But he will be here, I do appreciate him coming down and maybe, at least I learned some things, I hope you guys did too. It's, I found his information very, very informative. So the first thing, unfortunately for you, I'm the moderator. Starting with the Honorable Judge Margaret Evans, if you would just go down the line and state your name and just a little bit about your background.
Okay. First of all, my name's Margaret Evans and, so, oh, seriously? There we go. Sorry. Okay, my name's Margaret Evans and I have been common police judge since 2017. I started in the judiciary and municipal court in 2003. So this is my 20th year on, on a bench of some sort. I grew up here in Gallea County, went to Ry, University of Ryobrand, got my undergraduate degree. My husband and I moved away, we both went back to school, ended up getting a law degree at University of Kentucky. We moved back, he is the women's basketball coach out at the University of Ryobrand, moved back for his job. And by then I was a lawyer, practiced in Huntington for about five years at a law firm and didn't like that kind of practice in law. So came back to Gallea County and, in 90, late 97, and then the municipal judge position opened up in 2003 and I moved into that. And I am very happy to say that I've been able to serve Gallea County, come home and serve Gallea County in the capacity that I have. And I am 15 years older than the sheriff and 20 years older than the prosecutor and they're about to wear me out.
Thank you, Judge.
True confession.
My turn?
Yes.
Matt Champlin, you're Gallea County Sheriff. I am a 1996 graduate of Gallea Academy High School. Immediately after graduating high school, I entered into the Police Academy out of Buckeye O's Career Center, which I completed in 1997. Had a few fast-paced years where I worked at the Ryobrand Police Department. I worked as a juvenile probation officer for the late judge, the first judge in Olten, which was an honor. Also worked a little bit with the Gallea County Sheriff's Office before I started my first full-time employment with the Gallo Police Department in 1999. I had a very blessed career with the Police Department. I was the first K-9 handler for the city. I got my first dog in 2001, my second dog in 2012. So I served as a K-9 handler from 2001 until the day that I took office in January of 2001. January of 2017. Spent about two and a half years where I was assigned to work as a plainclothes narcotics investigator with another officer from our department, where we essentially worked with confidential informants, doing covert drug buys and follow-up investigations, usually resulting in search warrants and indictments on individuals for trafficking in drugs. Ran for office in 2016, because I have young children myself at home, I could see the culture changing in our county, and I didn't like the criminal element that I was seeing. And what started as a joke on midnight shift that I'm going to run for sheriff because I want to change things, came to fruition, and I decided to run, and it's probably one of the best decisions in my life. I love the job, I love the people that I get to work with, we have recruited and have probably one of the best teams of law enforcement professionals that I've seen in this county during my time here, and it's truly a blessing to, to serve my community and change the culture, not just from the law enforcement perspective, but through the relationships that we have with our mental health community, our substance abuse community, and just generally, we like connecting with our community, being involved in events, sponsoring events, and you know, we truly have a purpose of service, and we feel like our interaction with the community pays dividends in us doing our job. Thank you for having me.
Good Sheriff.
Good evening, I'm Angela Stowers, I'm the Deputy Director of the Gaya Jackson Megs Adam Board, which is the Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Board. We shorten that up quite frequently for obvious purposes, and I feel a little unprepared, I didn't bring my resume. I came prepared to talk about the board and those duties, but I will share, I will do that, but proud graduate of Gaya Academy High School, University of Ryegran, and Marshall University. I do have a clinical background, I came to the board about seven, seven years ago now, I believe, had spent my career since 1997, working across the continuum of care, and I'm probably going to reference after all the evening as we speak, starting in prevention in 1997, or, yeah, that's right, 97, October of 97, it's been not long ago. Progressed through the treatment continuum, obtained additional licensures, and I've worked as a counselor for a number of years, substance abuse and mental health, so I do hold a dual credential, independent licensure for treatment of both. I haven't done direct service for a long time. I worked initially in Athens, you know, many counties at the beginning of my career, and I believe we were able to expand services into Gaya and Jackson counties with the agency I was working for, probably in, I'm losing track of time, this is why I need the resume, but I was very excited to do so. It was always my goal to serve this community, I'm looking at Reggie Robinson back there, because I will give him the credit for being my first supervisor in the prevention field, and I always said, why, why can't we be in Gaya Jackson? Why can't we be in Gaya Jackson? And let me be old, here we are, so, that's me. But I do want to take a moment to talk about the board, because I think it's an entity that's not really known to a lot of people, even though our name is out there on a regular basis, and we've got a lot more material and information circulating these days, but we really are an entity of local government. We are assigned duties and responsibilities that are outlined in our Vice Code in Section 340, so we really are responsible for overseeing the behavioral health system in the counties that we serve. There are 50 boards across the state, some are single counties, some are three, like us, we have boards as large as six counties of responsibility, I can't even imagine what they manage on a regular basis. But it's our job and our privilege to work with partners in our communities to develop the services that are necessary to not only prevent mental illness and substance abuse issues, but to treat them and then provide adequate recovery supports. So that's kind of the board, in a nutshell, there's much more to it than that, but, okay, pass it off then.
Hi, everybody, my name's Amber Richardson, I'm the Executive Director of Philida Hope Community Campus. My story's a little bit different, just because I've kind of been on both sides of this drug epidemic that we're talking about this evening, and I was a graduate of Gaya Academy too, graduated in 1998, I had a basketball scholarship, was doing grade in school, wanted to go for nursing. I had three years in at the University of Ryegran, and I had about three months before I graduated as an RN, when my drug addiction really hit and took on in my life, and I spent about 20 years in my drug addiction. It actually started when I had knee surgery, I had basketball, played basketball, had ACL reconstruction, got put on pain pills when I was about 13, and it kind of started from there, and it just kind of grew really fast. So, once I went to Ryegran, I dropped out, like I said, three months before my RN degree, I got into some trouble with law enforcement, and ended up, you know, in jail quite a few times throughout my drug addiction career, and landed me twice in prison. And the last time I went, I got out in 2008, and, 2000, I went in 2010, it was the last time I got arrested, that's the last time I ever knew, so I had 13 years of addiction. But I got out in 2013, and I actually went back to school while I was in prison, and I got an associate's grad thing, so that allowed me to go to the High Christian University and get my bachelor's degree counseling. And I was the first counselor at Philida Hope in 2015. And it's been a pleasure giving back to the community and working with the community in a way, you know, something that I took from, so I really relate to it, everything that everybody's talking about up here, because I've kind of been on both sides of that. So, out to Philida Hope, we have a residential treatment facility for women, we can house up to 16 women in a house, and we have step-down units, we can house up to 52 altogether throughout our senior living's residential, and we do have patients for men and women, both in addiction and mental health. And then we have a resiliency program where we work in the schools, and we give it to prevention, and we're getting started after-school resiliency program, after after-school for the kids. Just, we want to give back, so coming from the community and where people go through this, and what all they have to deal with, we want to be there to help them out, and I have special work.
So thank you, so just a couple ground rules. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a few questions, I want you to be thinking of your questions, so it's gonna need some time for that. So, if you've got a question, at the appropriate time, raise your hand, I'll bring the mic to you. I think we're cutting out just a little bit, were we cutting out on Amber? Okay, so here's what we're gonna do. So, I know the judge has heard Trooper Atwood before, so, several times, Judge. But I want to go through, maybe starting on the end here with Amber, this idea of how drugs enter the county. Any thoughts, as he was talking about his job and the large sums of drugs that's taken off the streets, any thoughts that you have as one, in recovery, and two, as someone that is shepherding a whole host of women at your facility, and this is the, you know, this is the evil that's, you know, that's trying to attract them?
Well, for one, hearing your story, I mean, it is, it's so, everything he said is very true, it was in my life, an addiction, how, you know, you hear things getting brought in, I know when I was incarcerated, you didn't think anybody would hear of Gaya County, but they knew it because that's where they went to sell drugs. So they came from our bigger cities, and they would come down here and disperse it in the county, so I was very surprised at all the people that really knew Galplus, because that's the word that, no way, they heard of it, but they had. So, you know, a lot of his story and what he said is true, you know, in that world of how it gets brought in, and how it's being dispersed, and, you know, how Matt was saying, how people cut it down, and you don't never know what you're gonna get nowadays, you know, and that causes a lot of overdoses, and, you know, and people just lie there now, fentanyl, that they cut it with or don't cut it with. And it's really hard being on the other side and seeing people suffer so much, because they don't know how much they're suffering and causing suffering to other people, so I really like to work with them on the other side, that, you know, we can try to help show them a better way to help out your community, be a part of your community. I know, one sad thing I want to say, I know when I was working with people, you know, I'll never forget, I had somebody that had overdosed and passed away, and then my other clients were like, yeah, we wanted to find out where he got that from, so we could go buy it. Because that's what people don't understand, is that's what's attracted to them, is they want the strongest, they want the best, and, you know, whatever they think is the best that's out there, and, you know, that causes other overdoses as well, when you get a bad batch, and then everybody's looking where they got that bad batch, because they know it must be pretty strong. So seeing both sides of that, just in trying to help them, so, I'm sorry, was I the wrong question?
No, you're doing, no, you're fine. Just in light of what the trooper indicated, what the sheriff indicated, any thoughts from just your seat in this, on this panel?
Okay, you know, and what we're doing now in helping people, you know, we're coming together and trying to help whole families, and, you know, so at Philida Hope, we're kind of well-rounded, we do the prevention, you know, it all starts with prevention, and, you know, if we can prevent these things from happening, then hopefully I won't see the parents and adults at our facility. And it does start at a young age, you know, stuff is introduced to kids at a young age, they hear stuff, they see stuff, it's actually incredible how young it starts now versus when I was in it, I was about 13 when I was first introduced, you know, we have grade school kids that know what it is and what's going on. So, you know, working with those kids in prevention, it also gives us a chance to work with families as they come in, so, you know, we have grandparents raising kids, we have kids fostered out and adopted, you know, we get a chance to work with families, the school systems, the Adams Board, the law enforcement, you know, all the way around to try to give them that continuum of care, of seeing what all they're involved in, what all that they need help with. And the same, I think, with the adults, you know, just helping them, I get a lot of calls and I'll say, I'll come to the house, you know, a lot of people are scared to come and say anything, where can I meet you, where can I talk to you, you know, it's getting them to talk to somebody, and getting them to reach out and get that communication started is what, you know, I think a key factor in helping them get somewhere, because a lot of people don't want to go anywhere unless they're forced, you know, I'm not going there unless I'm court-ordered, but if they can see that people truly care about them, we really want to help you, we are here for you, you know, we will come to you, we will, you know, do what you can, I think that's a big part with helping people in the recovery community.
Thank you. Angela, any thoughts on the presentation from the trooper?
Yeah, actually, I made a little note to myself when he was speaking, and when he said at the statement, "Tentile is in everything," and I think that's profound, I think it's something we have to recognize and remember at this point, just even underscoring the need for prevention, making sure our children are aware of that. You know, vaping is an epidemic among youngsters these days, and what they get in that vape cartridge, very well, may contain something that's gonna result in their being addicted for the rest of their lives, and they don't even recognize that. So again, underscoring the need for education and prevention in that regard, and just also encouraging that we understand the nature of addiction as an illness. You know, the majority of people do not use that substance with the intention turning to what happens in their lives. Amber, you know, she's kind of testified it to her own account of what has happened, and having compassion, having an understanding of that, so that we can recognize that people do need help, if they can't get help, help is available, and people recover. And that's what we really want to do here, is prevent people from starting, but also prevent people from dying, saving lives with treatment and recovery supports. Those are just some of the main things that were going through my head as I was listening to him speak. It is an epidemic, we're facing it every day, but again, through partnerships that have already been referenced and that we're so grateful to have, I believe we can come together and make a difference.
Thank you. Sheriff, you spoke, so Judge, anything, any thoughts that you had as he was speaking?
I just, it's amazing to, you know, every time we have suppression hearing in court, I have Trooper Atwood, or who's the name, Trooper Coon, and it's just amazing, the study that law enforcement has made, our Sheriff's Office too, of human behavior, and it's telling, and I appreciate that, because that doesn't, you know, you get a feel for that as you work with people and you get to know people, but these entities have studied how people behave, what's the next thing that most people do, and they capitalize on that, and it's just really, really interesting to see how they've developed that.
So, just a couple of questions that I have for the panelists, and there are some of you that are here that I know, and I'm not gonna name your names, but there are some of you here that have fought the battle, have come out victorious, and are here to talk about it, and I applaud you for that, and, and that's a big deal. My next question is about drug court, so you hear a lot of information about people that are indicted, or people that have been sent to prison, but most people aren't sent to prison. And in fact, we have a lot of first-time, low-level felons, they're not felon, but they're charged with felonies, and I think sometimes the efforts that go into correcting that behavior are overlooked for the bigger ticket item of so-and-so got a lot of years in prison. And, so something that I get to say at drug court, we have a graduation, the judge is good about letting everyone speak, but there's a passage in Matthew that talks about, wide is the gate that leads to destruction, but narrow is the way that leads to life, and I always reiterate to them, that's what they've done. They, the folks that have made it through and can talk about it from the other side have found life, because everyone in here could probably create a small list, or a large list, of folks that didn't make it. Maybe were raising their kids, maybe, I don't know, but, but, you know, so Judge, if you would, talk about your drug court program, what it entails, but before you do, I want you to talk about, you know, we picked on Mary Deal, she gets, she gets arrested for a low-level felony, she comes into the court, on that first day, talk about what you might require of her while her case is pending.
Okay.
And for everyone listening on this video, Mary Deal is not in trouble, and she's not a felon, we're just using her name better.
No, she's got an injury too, actually. So before I begin, I want to say to you all that, if I say something that is offensive, I don't mean it to be, it's, you know, coming from our standpoint, we see it on this side, and so, please don't take it as, oh, she just doesn't care, or whatever. Kind of along the lines of what Jason was just talking about, straight is, straight and narrow is the way. By the time, and this has been my experience through my entire career, I've only dealt with adult offenders, even when I was helping to prosecute with the city solicitor's office. So, by the time that we see somebody in court, they have 18 years of learned behavior. Now, some of them, you know, that is not the case, just like, you know, Amber, I'm sorry to pick on you, but, you know, you couldn't have had a better upbringing, but it was the exposure with your injury. But a lot of people don't live along the straight and narrow in disciplined lives, and so if that offends you, I'm sorry, I don't mean to, but what we do when we have an offender in front of us, we have a pre-trial services department, so if someone, Ms. Deal gets picked up on a low-level felony, she will add arraignment, before I even talk to her at arraignment, she will meet with my pre-trial services department, and they will do a risk assessment, basically to see, you know, if they're a risk to themselves or to the community, if they need treatment, those kinds of things, and it's a real quick assessment that they do. And if it is found that the person needs treatment, they will begin treatment pre-trial, before they're even, it's a bond condition, so if they want to be let out on a recognizance bond and go about their business, they also have to incorporate treatment into their lives. And then as their case progresses through, they have to be compliant with pre-trial services, and the way we're set up, they have to report either once a week, or every two weeks, well, twice a month, I guess, or just once a month, and it depends on the risk factor, the risk score that they have when we do our initial pre-trial assessment. So then, they have to be compliant, if they don't, we file a motion to revoke their bond, and we start over. We usually try to increase treatment, increase reporting, so that they know, hey, we're watching, we want you to be successful, we're gonna be holding you accountable on whatever schedule that you have. So, let's say they're, so they're doing that all through pre-trial, then they, if they're convicted of their charge, you need to know-
convicted of their charge, you need to know that there are a vast majority of low-level felonies for which no one can go to prison. So you know, everybody's like, oh, throw them in, lock them in, throw away the key. There are a lot of felonies now, the way our sentencing schemes are, that you cannot send them to prison. And prison isn't the answer anyway, okay? Nobody really gets, no men at least, really get better by going to prison. Now, the women's prisons have a lot more of opportunities, probably there's less violence, I don't know. And they're able to do more education and stuff. But prison is not the answer. So the low-level felonies don't go to prison. We have a community control probation department. And so most of the cases that go through court do not go to prison. We start out putting them on community control. And that again, we do a more thorough assessment at that point because they are post-conviction and we have prison hanging over their head if they don't do what they're supposed to do. But it always includes, if it's necessary, and most of them are, except for sex offenders usually, some kind of treatment. They have to go to treatment, they have to report to us, they have to do a class that's based cognitive behavioral-based, so they look at their behaviors and try to address what strategies might help them change those behaviors and become more disciplined and get the craziness out of their lives and focus. Some of those people who get sentenced to community control are also sentenced to drug court. Drug court is a very intensive program. We serve what's called high-risk, high-need people. A lot of them could go to prison. Their offenses are such that I could send them to prison, but there's something in the assessment that we do that makes us believe maybe they'll be okay with intensive oversight and treatment. And so when they begin in drug court, it takes almost a year to get through drug court. The first eight weeks, I meet with them every week, once a week, and then they have usually treatment or some kind of group or some kind of other positive behavioral thing that they have to do every day, just about every day. And we also put them on a random drug screen program where they have to call a number every day and it randomly, the computer randomly selects them to come in and submit to drug screens. So we have a ton of oversight. After the first eight weeks, if they have succeeded to that, then they go to the second level. They only see me once every two weeks, but they're seeing their probation officer, their treatment provider, their group facilitator, peer support, case manager, mental health, you know, they do all of that. And it is still a very intensive program. Then if they make it through that 16 weeks, they go to the next level. And so you can see why it takes a whole year. And the whole idea around it is to, first of all, try to keep people out of prison. Second of all, try to help them get their lives under control. I am only one person. I have one of my probation officers who is our drug court coordinator. And so the numbers are not that huge, but the numbers of people that we're able to get through those programs usually don't see them back. The recidivism rate is very low for people who've worked through that intensive program. So I also want to mention that we don't do it by ourselves. We have numerous treatment providers here in the county who come and meet with us in our team treatment meeting every week. We do that on Tuesdays at 1:30. And so our mental health providers, our substance use providers, we all go to our jury room and we sit down and we talk about the person who's in drug court. We started drug court, we're a municipal court, way back in 2006. And one of the reasons that we did that is because people in addiction aren't, they aren't always going to tell you the truth and they're going to tell their treatment provider one thing, they're going to tell their probation officer something else and their mental health provider another thing. So the whole idea of drug court is get everybody in the same room and let's talk about what Ms. Deal needs. What's she telling you? Is she doing okay with you at treatment? Is she doing okay with you at the class? Does case management see anything strange? And so it's all on the table and we're all there and we're talking about the one person. So there's no way to get around and fool anybody because we all know what we're talking about. So the success rate in drug court is pretty high. The success rate in treatment for people in addiction is not that great. The most effective thing that can change behavior is a faith conversion. And you know, Field of Hope, our partners out there do a phenomenal job. And when someone's ready to make a change, and that's part of why they change, it is extremely effective. And Kevin and Amber can tell you about their success, phenomenal success rates out there. Generally, when we do cognitive behavioral training, your success rate is about 25%. But that's better than nothing, it's better than not trying, and so that's what we try to do. And drug court success rates are much higher than that. But it's a small number of people. And I'm sorry to take so much time, but that's where we are. If you see in the paper, someone is going to prison, there are numerous charges that Officer Atwood brings to us that carry mandatory prison time, the high-level drug charges. If you see someone who's got a lower level, it's because we have tried and tried and tried through probation to get to the point where they will comply. Prison is not our first option unless they need it. So I guess I'll stop there and if you have any questions later, I'll certainly answer those.
So a couple of things. So if Mary's, again, pulled over and she has a small amount of drugs and she's good on pre-trial, she's making her appointments and she's doing all the things that she's supposed to do, believe it or not, we're not in the business of making people felons. I don't think that that improves our community. It does not improve their chances of getting a job. And I'm not suggesting that we're responsible for the consequences of someone's bad actions. Please hear me there. But if someone will prove theirself, then there are other options short of becoming a felon. For instance, maybe Mary would file a motion that's called intervention in lieu of conviction. She might then ask the court, if I complete this treatment or will you put me on a period of supervision? And if I am good and I do that, she doesn't get a felony conviction on her record. We have a lot of those, a lot of those folks that just need that eye-opening experience. And we don't, we don't hear another thing out of them after they get through that period. They've come to their senses and we don't see them anymore. So there are options that we have. We're not in the business of just making people felons. We've talked about mental health and we've talked about drug usage and how those things go hand in hand. I didn't really fully understand that, nor I don't think I still fully understand it. But I want to tell you a quick story. So if you've been in the common police courtroom, there's the jury box. Judge Evans used to bring several folks up, they would sit in the jury box. And then we would pull one out and we would handle their case. And there's one day where an individual was pleading guilty to a felony, it was a felony sex offense. And the judge asked the question during a guilty plea, what did you do that led you to believe you're guilty of this crime? And he proceeded to say what he did. And another lady was in the jury box and acting completely normal. And then he started talking about what he did and she balled herself up and then she just started rocking back and forth. And I didn't know what was going on. And I thereafter realized his story and his offense triggered some things that happened to her. And what things happened to her has led her to a life of drug use. And so it does go hand in hand. People don't wake up saying, you know, I think I just want to be a drug addict today. That's crazy. And I did eight years of criminal defense work before I ran for office. And that's the thing I would ask everyone that I was representing, usually court-appointed, you didn't always stick needles in your arms, so how did you get here? What is it that led you here? And their stories were so intriguing. So I want to say, although it makes the news that people go to prison and people become felons and that type of thing, that's not the business that we're in at all. So Angie, next question to you. For those that are here, if you would just give a quick overview of area tools for families and what resources might be available. If someone's here that maybe has a child, grandchild, brother, sister, maybe themselves that are dealing with this.
Sure. Well, I'm pleased to recognize the number of providers that are surrounding the room this evening. There, we are very lucky in our area to have a variety of treatment providers that offer a multitude of interventions and prevention. So each of them have their special programs that are available, so I encourage you to meet them, go find out from each table. There are probably too many for me to actually address while I'm speaking up here tonight. This question is tough. It's really, there's good news and there's bad news, to be really upfront and transparent. If you are dealing with a young person under the age of 18, as a parent, grandparent, caregiver, you have a vast opportunity, first and foremost, to provide prevention opportunities and not let anything happen to begin with. You still have a good amount of control and oversight of that young person and you can help develop their mind and engage with prevention programs and prevention opportunities through their programming for parents to learn skills and learn how to communicate with your young people in your lives. Certainly, if they do fall prey to use and an addiction, you still can have that involvement and oversight in making sure they get to treatment and they get the intervention and the services that they need to hopefully make them well sooner than later. The less-than-positive side of that occurs once a person becomes an adult, because then they're responsible for them. And as a loved one, you can often feel very, very helpless. You don't have that opportunity to force treatment or have that oversight. I would encourage anyone in that circumstance to certainly still reach out to us at the board. I didn't even really recognize that when I spoke earlier, but we do a lot of linkage to providers and resources and just providing individuals with information and support about where they stand. We get calls very often. And even when I was still working at an agency that was doing direct service, it was not uncommon for our front desk to receive a call from someone that says, you know, hey, I'm calling, I want to get my son into treatment. Okay, great. You know, what's his name? How old is he? Well, he's 38. You know, that 38-year-old has to call for themselves. That parent no longer can make that step for them. And it's a terrible position to be in, when you love someone and you're watching them deteriorate. But I do encourage reaching out. Again, we can help connect you with programs that can encourage them and connecting you with providers and support services within our community. So I don't want to sit up here and give false information. Like I said, it's a tough spot as an adult, trying to help an adult.
So I've got one more question for Amber, then I want to take questions from the audience and then we'll be done. But Kevin Dennis, there's been a lot of discussion about you. If you'd raise your hand. There he is here. Good man, a good friend of mine. There's two quotes that he's given that I steal from him, but I always give him credit. The first one is, when we're dealing with addiction, we, there's three options. One is death, another is incarceration, and the third is radical life change. And that is what we strive for. The other thing that he says oftentimes is, the road from addiction to recovery is not a straight line. And we, it looks more like this, right? And so Amber, the question to you is, to the family member, to someone that is here tonight, to their loved one, has had those, any thoughts? Any encouragement?
You know, I talked to a lady just the other day, you know, we get calls and they want, you know, my daughter needs help. You know, she's came home, she's losing her kids, she's, you know, they know, you know, she's into stuff. And it's reaching out and encouraging them to talk to somebody, even if it isn't me. If they will meet somebody and talk to somebody, you know, I, like I said, and I know I'm not the only provider, we're not the only ones, but I went to several houses in the community just because they're afraid to go out somewhere. I will come to you. Let us come and help you. Let us reach out to you. You're not alone. You know, they can get through this. And just knowing that they have other people there that care about them is a huge thing. Because you know, when I was down and out, you feel helpless, you feel hopeless, you know, you're like, I'm never going to come out of this. And you know, I'll never forget the little ladies that came into jail and would talk to us and do a Sunday lesson with us in the Bible. And it was so encouraging because you know, they cared about me and I'm in jail. You know, so just having those people that care about them, you know, my parents, you know, they got to a point, they learned not to enable me, but they loved me. And you know, they encouraged me through it. So you know, there, my grandma always used to say, as long as there's life, there's hope. As long as they are alive, there is hope that they can change and you know, hope that there can be a difference. And you know, staying on them to get connected with somebody, anyone in the community that they feel comfortable reaching out to, that's what I would encourage to do. We encourage a lot of our girls, you know, community is huge. Who do they have in the community when, I don't have any at home because my whole family uses, you know, the churches, the people in the communities, you know, job and family services, you've got, you know, all your other agencies, you know, who can they go to connect that can help them outside of that? You know, all of those are great resources to help people and be somebody there for them. So that would be my encouragement, just to keep trying.
Thank you, thank you. So you've heard a lot. What questions do you have? Anyone?
I'm good.
Okay. Well, we want to all hear it, so I'm going to give you a mic. Is that okay?
My question is for Judge Evans and I guess Amber. There are a number of individuals that come to Field of Hope and other treatment programs in the county from other areas. Do those end up being a part of your court program for drugs or do those cases get transferred to you when those people come to your county or do they go back to the county they came from?
It would depend on where they are in the process. Now, if they're on probation and they're transferred to, they transfer down here, then my probation staff would oversee whatever it is that they're doing and make sure that they're doing what they, what the judge in Franklin County ordered them to do. And I'm not sure if that specifically answered your question, but from my standpoint, it would be if they're just, if they're involved in the justice system and they're on probation while they're here doing treatment, then they can have their probation transferred here. So I guess first, we work a lot with Jackson, Benton, Megs. A lot, majority of our ladies right now come from those counties, but we do get some from out of counties. And I've never really had any of them switch probation, so we stay in contact and send reports to those other agencies and work with their probation officers. And I know, like, we just had one that graduated and she wanted to go back home to that county. So we set up support services for her going back to that county. You know, we stay in contact with their probation, let them know when they're here, if they leave, if something's happening. So we just, we report with other counties what it is that they're needing from us if they're at our facility.
Thank you.
Now, you're thinking of a question. Mary Deal, the troublemaker this evening, has asked me to come back to Superintendent Craig, Ryan, Superintendent Phil Coon. If you would both just give just a couple of seconds, a couple of thoughts of what you're seeing in your respective school districts as it relates to what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, most of all, we see is THC and typically in the form of a vape or a dab pen. Very rarely do we actually see marijuana, kind of like cigarettes. You don't see students with cigarettes, but you see them with vapes. And so I think a lot of students start with nicotine and they gradually increase to marijuana. We all understand that that's a gateway drug as well. And even then, students are getting it from other people and they don't know the source. And again, fentanyl, unfortunately, we've had incidents where someone has shared a dab pen with another student and they've had to be rushed to a hospital. So we do have vape detectors, we got preventative measures, we do a thing with HRS. So we have drug prevention education in our schools. We have classes for those students who get caught with nicotine for THC at school as again, another preventative measure and another step. But we also see students who try to make money with it as well and distribute. And so we handle those very firmly as well. But it's unfortunate because again, a lot of it is modeled behavior. And for a lot of our students, that's their way of getting by.
Yeah, I would say exactly, we see the same things in the county as well. Just like maybe mentioning the age group that we see. And we had a fifth grader a day that had vape pens. So it does get down all the way to the elementary level. That is very rare that that happens, but it still does. We had, I think, on a fifth grader last year, same situation, see a lot of vape pens. We did have earlier this year marijuana in our middle school, but we did handle that situation very well. situation fairly. Like Mr. Wright said, we do have a lot of prevention programs. We're probably the Drug Free Clubs of America program that we started last year. And we're getting a lot of participation. We're about 50% of our students are participating in that extra grader group. But, you know, it's definitely a major concern. I also remember what the officer said about where people hide it. And I know that that is the case and that happens even at our level in the school system, hide it in places that you may not think. So, you know, I'll tell you, I'm originally from Jackson County and I've been in Gauki for, this will be the third year. And I've really appreciated all the support and all the different entities that go into prevention. It seems like it's a lot more people involved in prevention in Gauki than Jackson. Maybe just in this role, I'm seeing it more. But, a lot of great people in Gauki County supporting, I know our kids and I'm sure adults as well. So, I learned a lot from it and I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes. Mary, if you do want to speak and you do have some rights, I'll read these to you.
There you go, Mary. Kidding. I just wanted to point out too, we did, you want to, like, parents who have children, I was thinking about that too. You want to warn your kids about TikTok challenges. We had a student that had that in the middle school last year who almost lost his life because of it over a simple Benadryl pills. So, you want to make sure your students or your kids know about that. And so, you want to make sure, you know, that's one thing you might let them know about is those TikTok challenges are not safe.
Anybody else? Got one here, then we'll do a few ready.
I don't have a question, Jason. I just, like, I am a grandmother, aged six, 14, 16. And I just want to thank everybody for trying to make our community safer because some of the stories I've heard, it breaks my heart. And I thank God, the path that my brain keeps growing down, they've got good parents. And I just want to thank everybody that's trying to keep our community clean.
Thank you. Reggie Robinson, Health Recovery Services here, and I really appreciate everything that we've heard tonight. I wonder if our law enforcement representatives would talk a little bit about Xylazine. We're starting to see it in our area and I didn't see anything in the packet about it. Just wondered if someone could educate our group a little bit about Xylazine.
Interesting you mention that. I actually just had a case inside of a county that was presented to a grand jury last week where the primary drug in the chemical testing was Xylazine. That was actually the, I think it's the first time I've had that as the primary drug. So, I had to look it up myself. That was kind of alluding back to earlier when I said there's about 100 drugs out there that are like fentanyl, but they're not called fentanyl. That's one of them. So, when I did a little research on it, it's a synthetic opioid, similar to fentanyl. It's about the same potency, somewhere in that range. It's just another chemical drug. I couldn't tell you why it's getting used, probably based on availability. The way that these drugs seem to work is once a new one pops up, like fentanyl, or there's been some others, I can't think of the names of them. If they're not scheduled, like there's some random chemical drug from China that's legal there, or maybe it's legal here in the United States, it takes a little time for our legislative system to make it a controlled substance, which makes it illegal to possess or manufacture, distribute. So, it's like a catch-up game. So, once we, that drug comes up and it finally makes it through to where we can do something about it, that one falls off and here comes a new one. And that's why there's just so many. But, that's about all I know on the Xylazine, that it's another one coming up.
Yeah, it's, you're exactly right. I was talking to Emily. We went to a training at Bowling Green University. If you change the chemical makeup slightly and you get a new drug, it takes lawmakers a long time to catch up with anything anyway, right? So, it takes our legislature just a while to catch up to make that illegal as well. So, good question, great question. Any other questions? Yes.
My name is Marlon Griffin and I'm a community leader, Jeremiah 29:7, executive director, and also emancipation celebration, and also the pastor of Mount Carmel Baptist Church. This is directed to Matt. What is the biggest fentanyl drug bust under your reign as sheriff in Gauki County?
I think that we had one where we had a couple ounces. Usually, we're not seeing, we're seeing a lot of pure fentanyl busts, but we're, usually what we're seeing is the mixtures like Matt was talking with the heroin mixed with fentanyl or the methamphetamine mixed with fentanyl. It kind of ebbs and flows here in our area. We've just started to see cocaine and some crack cocaine creeping back in. Quantitative amounts, we don't really see, we don't get the five pounds that Matt's seeing out on the interstate because either they're picking that off on the interstates or a lot of times when those couriers or those dealers are coming down through here, they might be bringing five pounds down. But, they're not necessarily bringing that all here. They might be making a stop here in Gauki. They might be making a stop in Charleston. They might be making a stop in Huntington. So, you see a lot more of the larger quantities, either coming down the interstates or in the big square cities. We usually see more of the ounce to two ounce a lot of times. The last place that we ran a covert operation on, it was kind of like a candy shop. We could buy cocaine, we could buy fentanyl, we could buy heroin. The guy had pills. So, he was sourcing from several different locations because that provided him the opportunity to serve more than just one type of line down. If people wanted cocaine, they could get cocaine there if they wanted fentanyl. So, a lot of our people that we usually work our investigations back on, a lot of times we'll do, our covert operations will last several weeks because we will do multiple recovery narcotics purchases, which will ultimately lead to a search warrant. Sometimes those are fruitful and we get a decent quantity. Sometimes those are, we go in and we recover a smaller quantity of drugs. That gets coupled with our drug trafficking investigation from the drug buys. And a lot of times, we'll recover the money from the buys that we did. So, it's kind of a mixed bag when we talk about the cases that we work here.
And just a, so, when we handle cases where, let's say, someone owns their own vehicle and they're trafficking drugs, we will add a forfeiture specification to that indictment and that car will become our car. Now, I've yet to get a car. I'm still waiting on my car. But, any cash that is seized, we will forfeit that as well as proceeds of drug trafficking. And then, we have different accounts that, depending on what law enforcement agency seizes that, there's a percentage breakdown between their office and my office. We take that money and do drug prevention activities or send troopers to advanced interdiction training. I mean, who's better to pay for, you know, officers to be better at their job? Because we know we're not getting it from the county commissioners, right? So, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But, to let drug dealers, but to let drug dealers pay for our officers to be better at their job, right? That's what we do. And so, and what better way to fund, you know, awareness campaigns and programs and different things than drug money? Let's turn that negative into a very big pot. So, I'll just say one more thing. I think most of us on the panel will stay around and hang out and talk. I want to introduce someone else. Emily Vansicle, she's one of my main assistants in the office. She's here as well. So, any questions about what we do, we'd love to hang out and talk with you. Anya?
Perfect. Thank you so much. And Emily gets to work in juvenile court with us. And I have my judge with me and he supports me being a part of this coalition. And it's just absolutely a wonderful thing. I think she finished it perfectly by saying, "It's hope." And that's why we're here today. We have hope and we believe that this will happen. In your packets, in your black packets that you have on your tables, full of information, and Shannon just mentioned that there is the latest information on the website. What's the website? The Ohio Board Association will have the most recent information on that drug that Reggie Robinson was just speaking about. So, you can get online there. In your packet, you will see this. Everyone got a pencil. And so, you can understand the word fentanyl tonight that we talked about. This small amount that sits at the end of a lead pencil is fatal. That small amount. So, that allows you to understand them, Patagonia, and how potent it is because that is fatal. And so, that's super important for you all to understand that. The packet of information is full of information that we put together. Thank you, Shannon. There is a group of people that are here that are waiting to talk to you. I appreciate the panel tonight. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Matt Atwood, for coming. And we thank you, Jason. You did an okay job. And we talked about who better to emcee this event than Jason because he's a good talker. So, thank you so much. You can speak to your vendors on the way out. They also grow all kinds of herbs. And we just appreciate them being here and ask questions. That's why we're here. That's why it's so important for them. And again, don't forget to fill this out. This just gives us information of you all being here. And we like to know that. And also, reminder of November 2nd at Gauki Academy High School at 7:00, Surviving the Fall, Kevin Hines. And with that, my team, is there anything else I'm forgetting? Tom Mulligan is our president of the Coalition. Is there anything that I'm missing?
You've all done a great job. Thank you.
To do well. So, with that, we thank you so much. Oh, yes, thank you, Judge. There is a survey and information in that. Fill that out and just leave that on the table, please. We'll take care of getting that. And again, thank you for making this important, for being here. We appreciate you for coming. And it looks like we had a good, I said, a good amount of chairs and tables. So, we appreciate that. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening.